All right, good evening. Didn't sound like it. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome all of you to the... April already.
No, March.
March. Get ahead of myself. April Fools. Anyway, the March meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustments. And with that, I'd like to request that if you have a cellphone or whatnot that's gonna make noise, please mute it so it won't interrupt the meeting. I'd appreciate it. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. And call the roll, please.
Jane LaRoche.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Gail Ober.
Here.
Steve Bogert.
Here.
Michael Quett.
Here.
Michael Vekit is going to be late and Marsha is absolutely notification.
Okay. Everybody get an opportunity. The next on the agenda is gonna be the minutes. Everybody get an opportunity to review the minutes. Any additions, subtractions?
Oh, Steve, we just need to seat Jane. Did you want me to officially seat her?
Yeah, you need to seat Jane.
Okay. I usually wait, but that's all right.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted her to vote on the minutes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Jane, you're gonna be a voting member at least until Mike gets here. And if he doesn't show up, two out, okay? Very good. Thank you. So any additions, subtractions, modifications? Missing question marks? No? Like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as is?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second. Discussion there being none. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Uh, you know, I'm sorry. I just jumped on something that I noticed. In the last page of the minutes, that I've got in front of me.
Will we, can we reopen this, the board?
Can we reopen this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just noticed something.
All right, we're gonna reopen this, and then we'll have to vote again if we change.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's variance number sixty-five, eight forty-five, Weers Boulevard, Unit four. Variance application, Karen. You have in here that I would, that I would support an existing deck to the edge of the house, but not beyond it, and that Mike agreed. I believe we included that as part of our motion, not just to build an existing deck, but...
There's a condition of approval under five unnecessary hardship with deck is not to extend past the exist...
Okay.
End of the existing cottage. Is that...
That, that'll do it. That, I just wanted to make sure that that made it in there.
Yep, it's, it's in the condition of approval. It's under number five.
Okay, then I don't need any changes. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I needed to...
Then we'll let the motion stand.
Okay.
All right. Next is gonna be, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, continuations. Uh, it looks like the only continuation we had was twenty-three Summit Ave, and that's been withdrawn. So we're done with that. We'll move right on to the public hearings, new applications. And with that, we're gonna start with seven point one, which is application two zero two-two dash zero 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 eight variance. It's Race Point Road. It's variance application. And they're asking for a variance from Article six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B, side and rear setbacks that allow for construction of a new house. A portion of the home and garage would encroach in the side setbacks. And applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here tonight with a very interesting application, one that really requires the services of the zoning board of adjustment. With me is Jessica Bailey, who did a lot of the planning and wetland things that we're gonna try to explain to you. Can you see this?
Excuse me. Could I ask the person in the back by the window to drop that?
Blind.
Blind, it's right in my eye, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is, it's tough, yeah.
One on the other side.
You have this one too?
That one.
That one. Thank you.
Death of a thousand cuts. Can you see this, board?
I can.
Folks, okay. I'm gonna have Jessica flip it around as I, as I talk. But this first, um, this is a lot that's primarily wetlands. It's not a unique or special wetlands. It's just the last lot on the street. And over the years, all the surrounding properties have more or less used it as a drainage spot. So this property actually has zero point zero zero upland that is, there's no land that's outside the fifty-foot setback. So the upland is in this orange here, and none of that upland, which is good land, can be built on because of the buffer. We're going to get a CUP to the planning board for the buffer. But I just want you to know, this is a very unique property because it actually is basically, it's, it's primarily all wet. There's just one spot
I'll get it.
where we've proposed a modest dwelling. And in order to have the dwelling and to maintain any kind of setback from the actual wetlands, we're here tonight to request a variance to go into the side setback area. The closest building will be forty-nine point... Go left, shoot with the sideline. You've gotta go extra five point two. So, I'm aware. Hi, brother. She, she, that's because she measured it, too. But we're basically pushing back about four feet into this ten-foot buffer so that we can create a buffer and a rain garden along the wetlands. As you can see, we've proposed a very modest house, twenty-four, twenty-four, thirty-five, seventeen, with a deck and an outdoor paver patio. And the actual area of the variance is only two hundred and fifty square feet. So we're, we're just coming into this just, just a little bit. And basically, um, we're gonna show you some, uh, some details on what we've proposed. But we have been to the conservation commission. We have filed this CUP with the planning board. We've gone to the technical review committee of the planning board. And we've incorporated both the conservation commission and the CUP of all the departments' comments into, into these plans. We, as part of our application, we did include the conservation commission notes. We have also done the tax map, and we've taken pictures of the site. And we have also attached copies of the wetlands boundary signs that we're gonna put along the boundary of the wetlands. One of the recommendations of the conservation commission was a, um, to put in the actual deed, and we've submitted a copy of the deed. And their recommendations are actually now going to be in the proposed deed on the second page. There'll be no wetland filling in the future. There's no accessory structures on the lot. No removal, cutting, or filling of the rain garden on the premises. Snow from the driveway may not be stored in the wetlands on the premises. And the actual detail for the actual variance and how we're doing this, I'm gonna let Jessica explain why we think it's so important that you grant us this variance because it allows us to, to do some things along the wetland boundary to preserve the wetlands. So we're here asking you for that four feet so that we can be three feet, four feet, or four and a half feet away... The structure can be away from the wetlands. And in that area, Jessica will explain what we're gonna do, if you would, Jessica.
The primary theory is to replace the wetland buffer that we're unable to meet. Be able to enhance it, to be able to add some protection to the wetland that has been delineated on the property. And this wetland enhancement buffer, acting much like a rain garden because it does allow for storage for any kind of storm water from the, from the structure. It does create a text sediment and toxin retention. It allows for water to be absorbed. It's creating that buffer with, from things being directly passing into the wetland edge. So it's going to be natural wetland plants, everything that's found native here in New Hampshire. And it's shown here in this green color.
And could you show her, them the permeable paver deck too, Jessica?
Well, the permeable paver deck, well, the conservation commission was very concerned about an outside seating area. And without us providing a designated area that a future homeowner would do something without coming for approvals and prerequisites. So I've included a permeable paver patio, which again creates that stormwater infiltration. And it creates that designated area to go outside, drink your coffee, have your tea, watch the birds. And that was part of the conservation commission's comments. And we found that to be a very reasonable solution.
And so why we're here is, we need a variance for that two hundred and fifty square feet, so we can push into that ten-foot.
This picture shows it pretty good.
Okay.
It's still right here.
It's this pink.
The solid pink is the part of the house in the side setback.
Okay.
The rest of the pink is the regu, is the structure in, you know, inside the property.
And these, these wetlands are not unique or rare. There's no fish or cellfish. It's basically everybody else's on the streets.
They're not significant. They're not high functioning. They're not high values. There is a catch basin right here in the corner of the property. That catch basin was observed because I was hanging a wetland flag over it. It is my professional opinion that that catch basin has been forgotten about. It is, I looked inside of it. It is charcoal block full of sediment. And it has absolutely contributed to the man-made impoundment of this area.
So we'd like to build a single-family home on that lot within the ten-foot side setback of the abutting side property line of Ferncraft, Ferncraft condominium. It's gonna be four point two feet, four point two feet, and four point eight feet within the sideline setback. That means it's over five feet. They still have over five feet of setback. And it's also forty-nine, the house, this house will be forty-nine point two feet away from the closest Ferncraft unit. Moving the structure into the sideline setback allows for a three point one, five point five, five point three, and five point six distance between the edges of the structure and the delineated wetland boundary. This distance allows for the proposed wetland buffer enhancement rain garden that Jessica's explained to you. The area designated for the wetland buffer enhancement planning rain garden is located along the trans lateral edge of the wetland. This area shall serve as a partial replacement of the wetland buffer setback that cannot be achieved due to the lot's current conditions and site restrictions. Area along the boundary of the wetland will have silt fence installed, a core, core...
Wire.
Choir log, signage delineating wetland, and placing deed restrictions in the deed to protect the wetland per the Conser, Laconia Conservation Commission recommendations. See that deed and memorandum from the conservation commission, which is attached to the application. Also, the, see, you could see the wetlands conservation condition use request checklist that Jessica did. And over the past thirty years, this lot has taken drainage from surrounding property, which is a benefit to them and a hardship on this lot. As far as the variance criteria, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the property was approved as a building lot. The abutting property owners understood it was an approved building lot that would be built upon someday. The lot has also taken drainage from surrounding properties, which is a hardship to this lot. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the setback and wetlands buffer ordinances would be observed because there would be a reasonable distance, forty-nine point two feet, from the proposed house to the nearest abutting home, and a reasonable distance to the delineated wetlands that allows wetlands buffer enhancement area, signage, and deed restrictions to protect and preserve the wetlands. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would not alter the character of the neighborhood. Nothing would change. The house would be similar in size to a Ferncraft unit and other homes on Race Point. It would be nestled into and surrounded by the forested wetlands. If the variance were granted, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished because construction of a new single-family home of modest size, similar to abutting Ferncraft units, would not alter the character of the neighborhood. Nothing would change. The new home would be roughly the same size as abutting Ferncraft units and other homes in the street. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the side setback provision would result in unnecessary hardship. Literal enforcement of the regulations would not allow the property owners to utilize their property and build a home that has a setback from and protects and preserves the wetlands with landscaping enhancement plans, signage, and deed restrictions to preserve and enhance the wetlands area. So that's our proposal and the reason we're here. We believe that this variance makes good sense because it protects the wetlands and it keeps the, the structure away from the wetlands, albeit at the expense of incurring into the side setback. But we feel that if you consider the purposes of the zoning ordinance setback and the purposes of the buffer and, and the wetlands and conservation and protecting the wetlands, that this is a reasonable variance to grant. And that's what we're requesting this evening. We've done a lot of work on this. If you have any questions specifically of Jessica as to how she did all this work, there are, by the way, further sketches as to how all the different structures will be built and detailed notes on it and so forth, which are, are part of the plan. So this is quite an extensive plan set for, you know, normally, you know, a dimensional variance. Because we're asking for dimensional variance, but we're asking for it so we can get away from the wetlands.
Dean, good evening. As indicated by the applicant, this has been used for many years, right, wrong, or indifferent, for drainage.
True.
Okay.
Not true.
That's not true.
Okay, so...
So if this has been used to, as the water collector for this area, and it's then developed, will that change the thing? And then will we be back hearing this again because of other issues?
I went out to the site last week during one of those warm days.
Okay.
Snow was melting furiously. The, the area that is delineated as the wetland is, is natural. All of the property around it is, is developed. And, um, the the surrounding properties are draining towards that wetland. However, at one point in time, uh, between this proposed house and the, the condo development next door, there's, there was, created a drainage ditch which has a, a outlet to it, pipe. And most of the water that is coming from uphill is going into that drainage ditch. The drainage ditch is technically a wetland now because it has not been maintained as strictly as a, as a, as a, as a drainage ditch. So it's, it's been left natural for a great number of years. So it is, it would be considered a wetland at this point in time. As I said, I was out there the other day, on the warm day. There are pockets of standing water where the delineated wetland is. But it's not flowing.
Okay.
There was a little bit of flowage right near the road, near the storm drain, which we, we also found. And it's, it's, it's full of stuff and needs to be maintained. And, but it's, it's still functioning to some degree, you know? So I wouldn't say that... I, I, I would not characterize it as the other properties around it have been using it for the drainage. I would characterize it as that is the, that is part of the natural drainage flow that was there originally. And the properties around it have been developed. And they probably are contributing a little bit to what's going into that area. But the, I think it was Wednesday when I was out there. To not see flowing water, I was, I thought remarkable at the time, given the temperature, and there was still snow on the ground. And, you know, so it was not flowing water, but it, it is definitely a wetland, there's no question. So it's been properly delineated. I don't think that you, I don't think this proposal disturbs the wetland and does not disturb the natural flow that could occur in that area, although it is a minimal flow. Like I said, most of the water is, is going into that drainage ditch that was created probably when the condo project was developed.
Okay.
But, you know, we don't have a record of that, but...
Okay. Who owns the road?
Southdown Recreation, the Southdown owns the road.
It's a south private road. So then Southdown themselves should be taking care of the drainage ditch and stuff?
The drainage system needs to be maintained, should be maintained by Southdown. The actual storm drain is... I don't wanna misrepresent something.
The ditch that Dean is referring to is actually on the Ferncroft Village property.
Yeah, the drainage ditch is, yes.
And when I was out there last, probably two weeks ago, it was clogged with old remnant firewood, somebody's...
Yeah, it hasn't been treated well, that's for sure. The, the storm, the, uh...
I really can't tell if that ditch, that culvert in that ditch is an inlet or an outlet. Because the water is so clogged and stagnant and jammed up, it's not moving.
It, it was moving when I was out there, the, the day that I was out there. And it was moving, on that drawing, it was moving left to right and very slowly. It's not, it's not a gusher. And you can't see the pipe, but the water is going into a pipe which we believe goes to the, to the storm drain that's out. There's the other storm drain, not the one that's on this, on this property. There's another storm drain further up Race Point.
Well, with my last visit, we've located the catch basin.
That one, yep.
Between the property and Ferncroft.
Yep.
This catch basin we've always had.
Yep.
And then we've located several catch basins on this side of Race Point Road. And down here in this property, there was actually a drop inlet structure, but I, I didn't feel comfortable walking into somebody else's property.
Yeah. So, so it is the responsibility of Southdown to maintain the drainage systems. Even though this potential, uh, storm drain, the lower one, is on this subject's property.
It's right on that point, right there?
Okay, that's what I thought. Even though it's on this subject's property, the, the, the drainage system is the responsibility of Southdown.
Okay. Is there any recourse if they don't maintain their system?
I'm sorry?
Is there any recourse that the city has if they don't maintain the system?
Not for the city.
Not at this time. If, if we were to become an MS four, uh, community, which many communities in the southern part of the state are, they're under more jurisdiction of EPA. And it's just a matter of time before they gradually work their way up to us and we become an MS four, uh, community, but we're not at the moment. When that occurs, there are, there are, there's another level of jurisdictional enforcement that, that would be imposed on, on everybody, not just Southdown, but, but everybody. The city and other private landowners that are, you know, it's just the way it is.
Okay. That answered my questions.
Anybody have any further questions we can help you with?
Yeah, I, I have one, but, uh, Phil. Has Mr. Vazina been before this board in the last two or three months?
I represent Mr. Vazina, and I've been, I've been before the conservation commission. I've been before the technical review commission. I've been downstairs and I file things, but no.
Have you been here on this case before?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
No, I don't.
Not on this one.
I, there was another case...
There was another, that's what I'm thinking, there was another project, very similar, but not as...
It strikes me as being familiar.
No, no, Mr. Vazina had two lots. And so this is a Race Point lot.
Excuse me, excuse me. We don't take input from the audience until you've been requested to speak and that, so... And we'd appreciate it if you kept your comments and stuff until that point. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just have...
Yes.
Phil, where's the driveway? I mean, I'm sorry I'm so blind, but...
It's right here. Is there, is there, is there...
The easel is broken.
I'm afraid our easel is not quite what you would want, yeah.
The proposed driveway comes off of Race Point Road. Right? Up in here.
It goes right into the garage.
Correct. And there's a small little hammerhead that I've designated for any kind of winter snow stockpiling.
Is, and that's not in the wetland buffer?
No, it's on the opposite side of the lot.
It's on the opposite side of the lot?
The wetland is right here.
The wetlands is down there, okay.
In the original plan set, the driveway is shown right here. See that?
Oh, okay, all right.
And then, and then it goes to that hammerhead that you talked about. But it's, it is in the plan set. Yep, it's right there.
Okay, all right.
We know it's hard to...
Yeah, there's a lot of lines on the...
Yeah, a lot of lines.
Why we win for the color for the meeting tonight, just to kinda help. It does.
And the covered walkway?
It's more like, it's like a breezeway from the garage.
It's a breezeway.
To the house.
Yeah.
It, it's not enclosed, right?
No, it's just a covered walkway.
Okay. Well, it, it does matter.
Well, no, it's covered because...
Well, no, it's covered because it, it has drainage and stuff, yeah.
And what you're, what I'm seeing there i- in the green area, I guess what I'm trying to get a handle on is I'm looking at this and I'm trying to figure out
The green is where I have proposed the in wetland buffer enhancement plantings. That's
Yeah, and everything south of that is just the wetlands.
Correct.
So this is a good sized lot with a very small buildable area.
Yes.
Is what, was what I'm understanding.
It's got seventeen hundred and thirty-seven square feet of upland. And we're developing eleven hundred and some odd thou- hundred square feet. It's, it's about as minimal as you can.
Any other questions of the applicant? Yes.
On your covered walkway, can that have a slider on it? Or is it just a covered walkway?
We're proposing just a covered walkway.
Just to not get rained on when you walk from the garage to the house?
Yeah.
Well, I believe once you enclose it with a slider or anything, it becomes part of the structure. I, I don't is that correct, Dean? I mean, it's a technical question.
It would be part of the structure, but it's, it's being represented tonight as being an open walkway and that's what we would expect to be.
That's, that, well, that's, that was my, that was going to my question, is that it's an open walkway, it's not enclosed in.
It's not a breezeway.
Okay, it's not a breezeway. And should we condition it that it's not filled in? Although, does it matter? I mean, does, is there a density problem with this lot? It's a big lot with a lot of, you know, with a lot of
Well
Does it matter?
The only reason it matters is that our proposal was in its covered walkway. And we are, it's part of our variance request, so
Okay.
I would, I would, we're trying to seek the minimum variance necessary
Sure.
For us to put a small, modest home there, you know what I mean?
Right.
And we're, and we're only, you know, like I said, we're only asking for a two hundred and fifty square foot, you know, variance, so but, but we think it's important because it gets us away from the wetlands.
In terms of impervious area, it has a roof. So if you had it, if it had walls, it's not going to change the impervious area that's creating.
Right, it's not going to change the green area.
No.
Yeah, that, well, that was sort of where I was going, but I'm not, if it's that big a lot with that small of a thing, I'm not worried about the green space. Looks like they got plenty.
And I mean, if you look at, if you look at the dimensions of that home compared to the, some of the other homes that are on that street, it's, it's relatively modest.
And this is like a two family, two story?
Yeah, but it, yeah, and it's, but it's not going to have a walkout. It's just gonna basically be on a crawl space.
Okay, and, um, and that's it? A single house with a garage? No ADUs, nothing like that planned for the garage or above the garage or anything like that?
Part of it, right? No?
Single family residence.
Okay, there are no accessory structures?
accessory structures.
So that would mean no sheds?
No sheds.
No, no, no anything?
No anything.
Just whatever you could fit in the garage.
Oh, that's, the other thing is, as, as we can see, show you even though this is upland, we're not going to use this at all. We're not asking for anything for that, even though that is part of the seventeen hundred and thirty-seven feet of upland. So there's not going to be a shed. We had initially proposed a shed, but the Conservation Commission didn't think it was a good idea. So we amended our application and took the shed out. So this proposal has no shed. And the CUP has no shed.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant at the moment?
I do, just one.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's just on, on this, um, drainage area, this catch basin. Where do these catch basins flow to? They flow into this wet spot or is it taken elsewhere?
Well, catch basins catch water and take it away. So they wouldn't be draining into the wetland.
So it might, so it goes somewhere else?
It's They go under the road.
Right. So if it was, um, properly cleaned and maintained, would it function as it was designed? Would it help?
It only depends if where it's going, the pipe isn't blocked.
That's kind of where I'm asking.
It's my opinion that this wetland, there may have been a smaller, natural drainage, natural, small depressional pocket. But it has been expanded through man activities. That's what we call man-induced wetlands. It's not a natural wetland anymore. It has functions and values that are mimicking wetlands. And so therefore, it does fall into the Wetlands Bureau jurisdiction and things of that nature. But the drainage ditch on Ferncroft, yes, it was man-made, but yes, it is now jurisdictional. So it can be a man-induced wetland that is required to meet the criteria of being jurisdictional. But I don't think this was the way it was in nineteen eighty-seven.
Is that when the lot was developed out, give or take, in the, in mid-eighties? Okay. And this was built as a, as a, just to touch our legal basis, this was, this was designed as a building lot.
Yes.
And why is that important, Dean?
So it's a lot of record.
It's a lot of record, okay. That's, that's just, did, I just wanted to get that out there. It's a, it's a lot of record, it's a building lot of record and that's a
Okay, thank you.
That's something else, thank you.
Is there any other questions at the moment?
I don't have any questions for them right now, no.
Okay, y'all may sit down for a second.
Thank you.
And I'm going to open it up to the public. If anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record and address your comments to the board and not to the public, please.
My name is James Wason, I live on Race Po- uh, Race Point Road. I'm on the council in Southdown. I'm not here to object to it, that was not the point. The point was to try and understand what was happening. Obviously, I've learned some new things tonight that, uh, the laws of physics are not obeyed on Race Point Road. Cause this property is high and everything runs away from it. In fact, the drainage catch basin you're talking about was cleaned out this last year and is functioning correctly. There's one that goes across the road which was replaced this year as well. So this is a, a wetland lot and there's a lot of water coming from it. The, the water is not going to it, it's coming from it, running down the road to the drainage system. We at Southdown are concerned here because we've had another situation and another property where there was wetlands and we got, they got a variation from it. Then the next person who bought it, the people that built the, built a house on it, somebody else did, they came to the Board of Adjustment and, you know, pushed it even bigger, not in keeping with the community. So we're trying to understand what's happening here. What this is about, we're not opposed to a house. I live on Race Point Road. So we're just trying to figure out. And we're not, you know, we are to do that. But the idea that drainage is going to this property, I unless Jessica can tell me how or why, I don't know. The, the, the drainage ditch that they're talking about is on Ferncroft, I believe, which is not Race Point Road, that's a condo there. Apparently, it nev- that was never connected to the, the drainage system. So it's that. Thank you.
That is. Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Rhonda Holkinson. I lived on Exeter Place in Southdown. Rhonda Holkinson. So the concern that we have is the fact that, um, we were told when we purchased our property, uh, almost seven years ago, that the land back there was in fact wetlands. And the seven years that we have been on the property, we have seen water running through that. Sometimes a good stream flow coming through there. And my property is right over in here. So I mean, my yard butts up over it and we watch the water flowing through. Unfortunately, I don't have the knowledge as my father. He's in Florida and I'm trying to speak for all of us here. But we do know that this property is wetlands and our understanding is you can't build on wetlands unless there's a certain footi- uh, frontage of, around the wetlands. That's all I can say. You know, we are not opposed to a house being built, but we are certainly opposed to a house being built on a wetland that could cause problems. There isn't a lot of drainage. We've had drainage over on Exeter with no catch basins. So, um, when we have gone to the Southdown, um, asking about getting a catch basin and for our drainage, as my dad was a, a retired general contractor, he was stating, you know, you need catch basins. It's against code. And he was told that there's, the catch basins couldn't be put in due to the fact of, um, underground wiring. So the catch basins that they're talking about on that wetland property, I'm not sure if they, even if they were to be maintained, if they would function properly. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time, introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any further questions of the applicant?
Of the applicant? I don't think so. No, I, I don't think, I think he's explained it to me.
Any closing comments from the applicant?
Not to cause any great conflict between what was said and so forth. Jessica was out there last week and Dean was out there last week. And I think they both tried to take a look at that catch basin. And it's our humble opinion that it's totally clogged. If the Southdown Association cleaned it out, then it must be a lot of sentiment going back because it's, it's checkered block full.
Okay.
And, and obviously, you know, Jessica's a certified wetland scientist and she has designated what is wetlands on this lot and what isn't. Dean has confirmed that the delineation is correct and we are not building a house on wetlands.
This water garden?
It's not a water garden.
Rain garden.
It's a rain garden. It allows for, there
You're gonna create this rain garden, yes.
It's a, it's a half-foot slope. So it has storage capacity to allow the water to seep into the ground. So it's not just rolling straight across the grasses.
Right. And it's gonna be planted with
Native plants.
Native
I have found with, now with Cameron's, if you're all familiar with Cameron's Nursery over on Route eleven in Farmington. They were my favorite. They have not been providing the nursery stock because it's gone through some transitional phases over the last couple of years. So I provide a well-rounded plant list of native materials that I know people will be able to find at a reputable nursery. So my plant list is a suggestion of, these are the recommended plants. Buy, you need this many pots and you should be able to buy what the nursery is capable of supplying. I can't say nine nanny berries, three hibush blueberries, four sweet pepper bush, because the nursery may not have those, but they could have a bunch of other plants that I've designated on the list. And I've also designated anything in the, as long as it's not found in the invasive plant book by Dan Sagan of New Hampshire Department of Farms and Forests publication. It should be good.
Now, what is the maintenance of something like this? Does it take care of itself or initially is there some maintenance that needs to be done to it?
Maintenance. But the Conservation Commission did inquire about a monitoring event. And so we do have scheduled a one-year follow-up monitoring event where the primary
Post-construction.
Is to determine if the plant materials selected and planted have become established. Will there, will they be able to take full roots and be able to carry out plants' life-sustaining activities?
She's gonna do that too, that's part of the
And that's one year after construction is completed?
After construction.
After construction.
And should these plants not be rooted and should there be a problem? What's your further remedy?
If the plants did not become fully established, a, a follow-up report is being provided to the Conservation Commission per their request where the plant materials would be recommended to be replaced. With their, a subsequent monitoring report would then take after a nu- following growing season.
Okay.
Okay.
And then my last question, Mr. Chair, is I feel like I'm missing a prepositional phrase. And this is written by our staff and not you, but it says, "The catch basin on the property will need to be maintained." By who? Who?
Well, we, we, I think the Southdown Council just said they, they maintain their, their catch basins. I don't know whether this just filled up again very quickly or if this was a Jessica found it by happenstance, it was
I would love to ask the representative of Southdown, when did he complete their maintenance?
Can I respond to that or not?
Well, we, we're asking you the question because, because we, we found it in its fall.
We don't have a meeting with the audience.
Okay.
Okay, because that creates disarray.
All right.
And then we get unwarranted comments and
And every board is different.
Then I lose control. Which
Looking to you for guidance.
And, and
Okay.
I thought I heard that gentleman say that those catch basins up in that area in Fernwood were not being used. And that's why they weren't being maintained, they're not hooked up to the further system.
I, I heard that too.
I did too.
So sir, could you come up and, and add to this?
First of all, perhaps I should ask Jessica which catch basins he's talking about.
The primary one that's, that's in high contention is this one.
Sorry, what, what, I mean, I can't see the map. Where, where's the circle here?
Here's the circle.
This one here.
And right, right, right here's the entrance to Ferncroft.
The one I'm talking about is this one here, which is, that's a s- catch basin, right?
No, that's a telephone box.
Oh, sorry. I mean, so if that's the catch basin, my understa- we, we ran a scope through it this year. We had scope, this was in the fall and this one was cleaned
So last year.
In, in the fall of eleven, tw- uh, sorry, twenty-one. And also they ran one across here. What I understand, there is an old what did you call it? There's a, it's a swale here.
There's a little bit of a swell, yes.
That was never connected up to the system. It's part of
It's carrying surface water.
It, it's, it's part of Ferncroft, which is a condominium association, it's not part of Southdown. Remember, that's, that's owned by Ferncroft, it's nothing to do with Southdown. But this one in the corner here, I know, because I live down the street here. And I was at that and it's running, I mean, there's a ton of water running out the hill right here now. It's pouring out of the ground.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, that still doesn't answer my question. Who is going to maintain the catch basin on the property?
And I think the question is whether or not it's actually connected to something.
Yeah.
It is.
Right now, it could just be a concrete cylinder in the ground.
And, and the, that's why I'm asking that question. The, the recommendation that came out of the Conservation Commission is the catch basin on the property will need to be maintained. My question is, by who? And if it's main- and if it is maintainable? That's what I want to know.
But if it's, there's no culvert in the catch basin?
To take the water away.
There's no maintenance.
I, I understand that.
So the question becomes null and void.
Well, yes, it does, to some degree. Okay, I'm just trying to follow up, that makes sure the Conservation Commission is
We didn't have the knowledge from the Southdown representative at the time of the Conservation Commission meeting.
Cause obviously they are maintaining their drainage, according to this gentleman who has no reason to mislead us.
Right.
Do we have a catch basin to nowhere?
It happens.
It happens.
I'm not saying it doesn't happen. Saying it's happening this time on this property is my correct, is my statement.
I got two in my driveway that go nowhere. They, they're my catch basins in the driveway and they go and they dissipate the water.
I think the real question
That's more like a French drain.
I, I think the real question here
But they're regular big drains with the big pipe and it goes down, whatever.
I think my
We're getting aside of ourselves.
I think my question, Mr. Chair, is, is that we have to decide, is, is this gonna, is building a house here gonna change any of this?
Doesn't
That's the real question that we have to
Well, we can discuss that when we
So we'll discuss that all ourselves, but
Yes. Okay, thank you for your time. Okay, thank you for your time and attention this time. Thank you very much. I'll may sit and we'll close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chair, that's my question. Does building this house change anything, in our opinion?
No, not if it's a building lot of record. It's the best place it seems to be built.
It's the only place it seems to be.
And that is the hardship in itself is that it, it, that is driving the points of it. They've done every reasonable act they could, it seems like. They've endorsed all of the recommendations from the Conservation Committee. Yes, sir?
Didn't we used to talk about the hardship of a land?
We're going to be, we haven't gotten.
And this is exactly the hardship of a land.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I was saying. It's, this is, because if everything else is what they've said, the rest of the whole lot is wetlands, then, you know, that being the only place to build it seems to me reasonable. That catch basin will work itself out, I'm presuming. Between everything, that's gonna work itself out. The only reason why I've mentioned all this is I'd rather talk about drainage and water and stuff now and then have it come back to haunt me a month from now.
A month, it'll be two years down the road. Okay.
So, anyway, that's my thoughts.
Mike, do you, you're, you're on the con con. Do you have anything to add to this? I mean, was there anything that came out of that meeting that, that, that you feel should be?
You know, it, it being a lot of record, it's certainly a lot that's filled with its challenges for development. And the, to have the right to be able to utilize their property, this is about the best compromise that I've seen. They did have another, um, building in here, but they were kind enough to take that out. It would've been the land for not enough purpose.
Okay.
So.
Because actually, it would've meant another way trying to get to that little corner.
Correct.
Footpaths and everything.
Right.
So, the least way it takes that off the table.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we incorporate the proposal, the, the actual part of the proposal that addresses our variances into my, into the motion with the caveat that the memorandum issued by the Conservation Commission is part of the conditional, any condition that I wanna make on, on this. I mean, as it's written here, the granting of the variances surrounding, you know, that's fine. That's all, you know, letter perfect. I don't need to read that out loud. That's just, we'll incorporate this as part of the record for the variance, or my motion for the variance. But I do wanna condition it that the Conservation Commission notes are adhered to and that in the status, in the status update be reported to the Planning Department after the, within one year after the house is constructed. Just so that we know what's going on, if that's possible. I know you've agreed to do it, just that I'd like to see that report filed with the, with the paperwork within the Planning Department. You don't have to come back, I, as far as I'm concerned, you don't have to come back in front of any board. Just, you're gonna do a year follow-up after construction is completed. I want that report to go to our Planning Department. Okay, and I'll make that a condition of the approval.
So, your, your motion is to approve?
Approved, yeah, my motion is to approve, is to approve the variance, I'm sorry. I, yeah, I missed that part, yeah. It's to approve the variance with those conditions that I put on it.
And the reasons as stated by the applicant, the five.
And the reasons, the five criteria that are written by the applicant are, like I said, there's no need for me to write, read those out loud.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion.
Are you good with that, Mike, as far as?
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor of the motion? If everybody voted for, there's no zero, no against, so. Motion passes. You have a good night. Okay.
Thirty-six Orchard Street.
Next up?
Orchard next.
Is application two zero two two dash zero 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 nine. It's a variance for thirty-six Orchard Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five thirty-five dash thirty-five A, front setback to allow for additional. The home, a small portion will be in the front setback. If the applicant is here, please come forward. Introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might help you.
My name's Brian Taylor. I live on thirty-six Orchard Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. We currently have an addition on there now. It's a greenhouse is what it is. It's all made out of glass. So, we're not actually moving any closer to the road. We're just going sideways. But unfortunately, when the house was built back in nineteen-ten, they didn't plan on a zoning, unfortunately, at that time. So, I'm just extending it out sideways. Apparently, it's one foot too close to the road.
But it's squared off with the rest of the house, it looks like.
No, it's not. It's even farther away. You got the front of the house, which is, was it thirty feet? Is that, was that, is that what the front is? The front of the house is actually twenty-seven feet. And this here is actually twenty-nine feet. So, they, when they built it, they didn't even bring it out to the front.
So, are you gonna take down that?
But your addition. I'm sorry.
Are you gonna take down that, that greenhouse?
Yes, and we want to, right, and we wanna increase it out another, about a five and a half feet. We, we wanna make it fourteen feet out. I think it's about eight and a half there now, close to nine. And what we're doing, we wanna put a bedroom down there, basically because we're getting older. All our bedrooms are upstairs. So, we're either gonna have to move or we can create a bedroom downstairs. And we've decided, before we get to that point, that you can't do stairs or something happens to you that you can't do stairs and you say, what do we do now? We're just trying to plan for the future.
But let me re-ask my question. Where the corner of the front of the house is in that setback.
Yeah.
Your extension will not bypass.
No, no.
In other words, it's gonna be in line with that portion of the.
Yes, of, of, of the addition, not of the house, but of the addition.
Right. Okay.
Because like I said, the front of the house is like twenty-seven feet. The addition is back about twenty-nine feet. And we're gonna be with the twenty-nine feet.
Okay.
Try to highlight it in red for you. The portion is that small piece.
Yes.
Yeah, I see the encroachment. I was just wanting to make sure we're not.
Right, no, it's, it's in line, it's just the angle of the house.
And that's within the side setback, correct?
Yes.
It does not approach in the side setback.
Just the front. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? You may have a seat for a minute.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Bring it back to the board. Any further questions of the applicant? So, I do have one question. This is just gonna be a, a one-story addition?
One-story addition.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments, sir? With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. Which I'll field.
So, it looks to be a fairly reasonable addition.
Yeah.
Minimal impact.
The hardship thing, the house was built there.
But the addition wasn't built there.
No. That's why you're getting the variance.
I know that, that's my problem. That the house is built there is one thing. That the addition was not built there is why we're here.
Right.
So, where's the hardship then?
I don't see one.
She angles the house and what it sits on.
Because the front of the house is already in the setback.
The front of the house is, okay, huh, Mike?
Right.
You can make that motion. Okay. I'll make a motion. Are you ready for a motion? You want a motion? Anyone got anything else to say? I'll make a motion to approve zoning application two zero two two dash zero 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 nine for a variance for thirty-six Orchard Street, tax map four twenty-three, one seventy-three sixty. That the, requesting a setback from Article Five, Section two thirty-five thirty-five A, the zoning ordinance to build an addition in the front that encroaches into the setback, uh, the front setback by one foot. Granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest. The public interest in this case is that it's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. It is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. The encroachment into the front is not so extreme that it's gonna create any problems for the city and its maintain, maintenance of its right-of-way. The, the variance was granted, the spirit of the ordinance and would be observed for the same reasons. The spirit of the ordinance is to, is to maintain some measure of consistency throughout a neighborhood and to protect the city, as a case of a front setback, to protect the cities right-of-way through there. But I don't believe this is a big enough encroachment to create a problem for that. Substantial justice is that the gain to the general public, there, there is no, there is no offsetting diminishment to the public, to the general public that would be created by this. There won't, there's no detriment to the general public. The surrounding properties is gonna have no value, no, 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 there's no, that's a wash. And then, the hardship is that there, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance, which was in this case to create a single-family neighborhood, and the specific house that sits on it and that it is reasonable. It is a reasonable request. Please make sure you don't go, don't, don't, giving you an inch, don't take the mile. Okay?
Because it costs too much more to, to go that extra inch.
There is that, there is that, but.
Especially today, yes.
So, if we got a motion, do we got a second?
Hold on a second, Phil.
We got a second? Discussion of the motion? Is there any conditions of the motion we need from the?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean.
I just, I'd like to ask, just in case. So, with that being said, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Enjoy.
So, my next step is to do a building permit?
Yeah, do the building permit. I'll send you a copy of the notice of action in the next few days. But if you come in and fill in your building permit, I can just look in on that.
Thank you.
All right. The next application is actually two applications. We can hear them both at the same time. For the sakes of not having to go through it all the, twice. The first one's gonna be a variance on fifty-nine Clinton Street.
We have a new one coming, but it's stuck on the ship in the Chesapeake.
The applicant is requesting a variance from Article Eight, Section two thirty-five dash forty-eight E, design requirements, parking, to allow for parking within the side setback area in a residential district. And then, the next application is a special exception. That is two zero two two dash zero zero one two. Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article Five, Section two thirty-five twenty-six. Use permitted by special exception that allow for use as an artist's studio. Please introduce yourself for the record and tell us how you might be of help.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Shawna Bentley. I'm an attorney with West Scott Law and I represent Antias and Pogus. And I'm here with Nick Schedule, who is gonna help us fill in the logistics of what this is actually gonna look like if the board would approve our requests. All right, so I think I would like to start by speaking about the special exception application just because, beginning with how the property's gonna be used and then talking about how we'd like to modify the layout to fit that use, if that pleases the board.
All right, that's fine.
All right. So, as the board knows, it is authorized to review special exception applications and it is required to grant those where certain criteria are met. I think the form serves that function well, so I will just run through the criteria for the board. The property is fifty-nine Clinton Street. What we're requesting is that the property be modified to be used, or a special exception be granted to allow the property to be used as an artist's studio. I know the board is familiar with Scott Everett and Antias and Pogus, his various operations. If there's any blanks to fill in, it, he owns the Opera House through various entities. The fifty-nine Clinton Street property and the use of it as an artist's studio would help serve the performing arts at the Opera House. That's really what they're looking to do here. So, as the board is aware from the application, the table of permitted uses identifies an art, an artist's or craftsman's studio as allowed in this particular property with a special exception. An artist's studio is a place used primarily for the workshop of an artist, sculptor, photographer, dancer, crafts person, which may include incidental uses such as sales or lessons. So, the ordinance itself contemplates the use of the property for performing arts and that's what we'd be looking to use it for here. It would really be an area for representatives of the Opera House to meet with performers and workshop ideas for performances, to go over demo tapes and refine what those performances would be. So, the use requested is specifically authorized in this chapter. It is, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It won't, there's clearly marked pedestrian crossing areas and sidewalks that would allow access to the Opera House. And it would be, as the board knows, it's already permitted as a residential home, which conceivably would mean a family residing there twenty-four hours a day. This is more of a business use and less occupants throughout the day. The requested use will not overload any public water, drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff into adjacent property or streets. We would submit that it doesn't do that. Again, it doesn't have people living there, showering there, washing their clothes twenty-four hours a day as it would under the current use. There is also no increase in the amount of impervious area on the lot, as contemplated under these plans. And it's the same amount of lot coverage, if not less. The requested use will not create excessive demand for municipal fire, police, schools, or solid waste disposal systems. Again, this is more of a business use than a residential, so if anything, we would submit that it's less of a burden on the school system and the police and fire. There aren't any special provisions set forth in the chapter. The requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, and it won't be detrimental to the use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. We'd submit there aren't any hazards created, and its use isn't gonna have a detrimental effect. We would submit, on the contrary, it furthers the character of the community by further establishing Laconia as a center for arts and culture, and dovetailing nicely with the Opera House, and providing off-street parking in an area where that's sorely needed. The proposed location is appropriate for the requested use. We would submit that it is. It's in proximity to the Opera House and to public walkways. The requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of the master plan. As the board knows, one of the purposes of the master plan is that it results in preserving and enhancing the unique quality and life, of life and culture of New Hampshire. And I think the Opera House does just that, and this will help the Opera House do that better. So, I think we touched on the parts that were brought up in the application as well. We would reiterate all those points. If there's any special, specific questions about the special exception.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, if I would.
Please.
When you're saying artist's studio, and you described some sort of place where artists can collaborate with whatever. I'm not, I, I, I don't want this to turn into a short-term rental. There's not gonna be any artists sleeping there.
No.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, they're...
No, I can respond to that. So, it would be a place for the artists to meet with representatives of the Opera House, for them to wait before and after shows. I would say that the risk of it being converted to a short-term rental under this use is less than it would be if it stayed as residential. Yep.
Does Mr. Everett plan to tear down that building and put up another building in this place?
Yes, and that's what we have in the plans today. That building would be substantially smaller.
That's what I was gonna ask. It appears that that whole building that's currently in position's gonna be removed, and then a new structure's gonna be put in. That would be the artist's studio, and then the rest of that property would be turned into a parking lot. That's about what I see here on the drawing.
It would be a lot, yep. It wouldn't have an increased amount of impervious surface.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just trying to, to make sure I understand everything that's going on. That's, that was it. A new house or a new structure. Okay, and then the rest of it's gonna be parking.
Yes.
Whatever materials there, I'm, I'm just, okay. Now I get it. Okay. Any other questions?
Should we hear the parking, or should we make a motion for the, for the change of...
Well, let's hear it all.
Oh, you wanna hear it all?
Yeah. Let's hear it all. So, you can go ahead and go right, roll right into that variance.
Okay.
Let's see what we get.
Okay. So, I think it would make sense at this point to have Nick explain what it's gonna look like, and then I'll ask you to let us do it.
So, thank you. So, we provided a preliminary site plan showing the proposed use. It involves a new structure. That structure would be more conforming to the setback for a struc- for the structure. And then it would be forty-five by thirty-three, approximately two stories. And then we've provided kind of ac- access in handicap accessibility-type space, and then standard parking spaces with a twenty-two-foot drive aisle, and then a standard parallel spots. We would propose new fencing to, to remove the existing fencing. It's, there's existing fencing there. It's kind of deteriorated, and that would be replaced. We proposed a couple of options in terms of a board-on-board wood, which I think there would be some communication with the abutters on, on trying to match with existing materials, but the other alternative would be a, like a white vinyl, which is similar to other projects that have been done in the area. Less maintenance, so there's a benefit to that.
Last longer, less maintenance.
We'd be doing a landscape buffer within the, the area between the fence and the parking. So, a couple of, I guess we have three red maples shown, and then some smaller winter berry holly or arrowwood viburnum interspersed within it. More or less, the, the encroachment into the setback is, is on both the side setbacks and on the front setback. Side setbacks being ten feet, or approximately five feet into the setback. And then the front setback is we are we're about, I would say, eight feet into the front setback.
How many parking spaces do you anticipate? Have you plotted it out there?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We've, we've shown nine spaces on this site plan. The yeah, nine.
Who owns that vacant lot to the right of the building?
This, so I believe this, this lot is associated with the house that's, there is a, it's not a vacant lot. There's a house on that, and so we've listed the abutter on here.
The uses.
Uses, yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah. So, the property, unless there are any other questions about the plan?
Well, I, I mean, so you're specifically requesting nine parking spaces?
I, we're specifically requesting a variance to have parking within the setback. The final number of parking spaces would be reviewed and finalized, I think, with the planning board as part of the site plan application with the planning board.
So, this goes, oh, so this is going to site plan? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right, all right.
But, but in order to provide the, the number of parking that's required, we know we're going to have to be in, in the setback.
Okay, so in other words, you've, nine-ish?
I think the, the parking...
So, right now, it's a residential property, so it's more of a driveway. So, for it to be anything other than a residential property, we'd be looking to add?
So, you can get your turning radius, back-out radius, and stuff like that.
I understand. I just wanted to know how many spaces, 'cause usually that's part of an application.
Just doing the math really quickly, just to kind of clarify what you're asking. For an artist's studio, the required parking is one space per five hundred square feet of gross area. If you take his approximate forty-five by thirty-three, you're looking at, with two stories, just over twenty-nine hundred square feet, the required parking would be six spaces, and they're showing nine. So, I mean, there is, there's, you know, there's room there.
Okay, all right. I, I just, yeah, I, that's what I wanted. I wanted to get a sense of, you know, how, how much parking to how much building to how much, where, where we're supposed to be.
Yeah, so they're, I think, trying to clarify the dimensions, and then they'll figure that out with planning.
Well, if it's only six required, and there's nine, those, those other three come from the one parallel, would that, if you ditched the three, then you would be able to pull it in and not have a variance whatsoever, and...
I don't think we could avoid the variance whatsoever with six spaces. I think we would be actually in the front.
Still in the front, still in the front, yes.
I think, I think what you're saying, there's potential to eliminate three spaces, still meet the zoning.
As far as the side goes, but not the front.
Not the front, yeah, you're, you're right.
And it's presently non-conforming to, so what we're doing is moving, moving further away from.
And the other thing to keep in mind is, parking is at a premium in that area?
We know.
So, any new use that goes in that is proposing extra parking, from a planning standpoint?
It's good.
We're all in.
Well, you know, there's that, but I'm, I'm just trying to jive this with some, with our existing ordinances, which I know. Now, another, I have another question that has less to do with the parking. It has to do with the fence. What's our ordinance say about fencing? Karen, we, we, we have to be under four feet within twenty-five feet of the road. Is that correct?
Not that far either.
It can't be higher than four feet in the front setback.
In the front setback? Okay, so, when you're designing that fence, or you can come to us for a fence variance, but we have enforced it in other cases. So, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm trying to be consistent with what we've done in the past.
No, we appreciate it.
Well, that site view is important.
You know, and so that's one of the things that, you haven't asked for a variance for the fence. And if you need to, you do have to come back from us, but bear in mind what our ordinances on fencing say. Okay?
A, a four-foot fence is, is adequate enough from the standpoint of blocking headlights from going into the adjoining property.
Right, and that, yeah, but I, I mean, I'm just saying, yeah, 'cause we have enforced it in the past.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and that will continue going forward.
Do they only need fencing on the wa- on the left side of that building, or do they? Because right now, they have it in the back, and on the right side.
They, they need to for the area where they're proposing the head-in parking, they definitely need the fence along that side property line. Because you're going to have potential turning in and out of there, then they need to have the fence on the, on the, on the other side property line. Any fencing that goes beyond the parking lot would strictly be at their option. You know, if they wanted to encircle the backyard for security purposes, that's, that's strictly their option. That's not a requirement.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant on the variance or the special exception?
I can run through the variance logistics as far as the, the criteria. So, it's presently zoned in the residential general district. As the board knows, that's designed to allow a variety of housing types and supporting facilities. One of the purposes is to make it more practical, make it more practical for medium densities of residential development, and to provide pedestrian access to businesses and commercial areas, which we would submit it does here. As far as the unnecessary hardship goes, the proposed use of the property is reasonable, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment, and the zoning restriction would interfere with that reasonable use. So, we would submit that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the provision and the specific application of it here. The parking area, as we discussed, is gonna be adequately screened by fencing. The proposed parking is similar to adjacent parcels in the area, and it's in a mixed-use area already. Applying the zoning restriction to the property won't further the general purpose of the restriction itself. As the board knows, RSA six seventy-four seventeen sets forth several purposes for the zoning ordinance. And we would submit that the following of those are not served by the strict application of this provision. So, it doesn't, applying it strictly here wouldn't lessen congestion in the streets. It wouldn't secure safety from fires. It wouldn't promote health and general welfare. It wouldn't provide adequate light and air. It wouldn't prevent the overcrowding of land or avoid undue concentration of the population. By the contrary, it will serve the purpose, going with our proposed variance, and build to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation for people in the area, parking and access to facilities, which are gonna enrich the lives of the people in the area and increase property values. Granting the variance won't harm the public or private rights of others. As we discussed, the property is currently not in compliance with setback requirements, and the proposed change will bring it further into compliance. Authorization of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Again, it's not gonna create an increased burden on the infrastructure. I would submit that it's gonna do the opposite. It'll create a more aesthetically pleasing street view than the current outdated residential lot with just a driveway. It won't desperately impact the property value. Again, we would submit it would have the opposite effect by increasing property values. It would provide additional parking, which the board knows is sorely needed. And finally, the spirit of the chapter is observed, and substantial justice done in the authorization of the variance. So, it does serve the purposes of promoting health and welfare, preventing overcrowding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population, and facilitating adequate provisions of transportation. We would also note, again, in RSA six seventy-four seventeen, every zoning ordinance shall be made with reasonable consideration to, among other things, the character of the area involved and its particular suitability for particular uses, as well as with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality. So, we would submit that that does that. It really serves the character of the area and furthers the operations of the Opera House and brings more culture to the area. And again, it's not gonna diminish the value of surrounding properties.
All right. So, any questions of the applicant at this time?
The applicant?
Of the applicant. Okay, you may have a seat. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one from the public was to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any further questions pertaining to the variance or the special exception of the applicant? Any closing comments from the applicant on the variance or special exception or both?
We don't have any closing comments. We would ask that, obviously, there be individual votes for the two.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I think it's a definite improvement for the great street area.
Okay. I'd, I agree with you.
Well, there is.
I agree with the fact that prem- parking is at a premium. I agree. Since it's not gonna be a bedroom studio, but a, a, a non-living studio, that, that's a positive thing. Myself. I am curious about the fence on both sides, though.
Well, we don't have a fence application in front of us, and now he's aware of our fence, they're aware of our fence ordinance, so I assume, I'm assuming compliance, do you know what I'm saying? I, you know?
No, I'm not worried about the twenty-five footer, this, that, or the other. That's not what I was talking about. My concern more is if we put the fence where they pull in, okay, and then we, we assume in New Hampshire, everybody pulls in front first, and we know fifty percent of the people back in to their parking space, so they can make the quick getaway.
Of course. What if the police are after you?
So... The lights are gonna be shining through the opposite side.
You're gonna be making a three-point turn when those blues are coming.
You know, but, so that was what...
Which you've read about in the book, of course.
Which I read about in the book, of course.
So, keep that in mind when, when it goes to the appropriate places and stuff, that fifty percent of the cars are gonna shine one way, and fifty percent of the cars are gonna shine the other way. Especially with these fancy backup cameras. I got one of those, and I tell you what, it makes that getaway nice.
It's still easier to be heading in the right direction. My only, my only thing is, is however, I think we need to condition the special exception that there are no overnight accommodations. Would I have preferred to see someone build a, a full-time commercial, you know, resi- commercial residential property there? Yeah, but I don't want short-term, I don't, I, you know, to condition it with no residential use eliminates the fact that there can't be any short-term or overnight accommodations there regardless... Or overnight accommodations there, regardless of what the state legislature does.
Well, that's going to be difficult to have overnight accommodations anyway, because it's more of a studio. There aren't any beds in there, and there aren't going to be any showers probably.
You'd be surprised where mattresses and.
You'd be, yeah, and I, I, that's, that's all. I mean, if they're not going to put a residence upstairs, in other words, have an up and down, you know what I mean? With a studio downstairs and a, an apartment upstairs.
Crash pad.
Well, I don't want it to be a crash pad, is what I don't want. I think that's one there now. All right, so I'm saying to be consistent.
What's your thoughts on that legally, looking at that?
We do not have, to my knowledge anyway, right now, we don't have, we don't have building plans.
Right.
So I don't know what the configuration of, of the building inside is. It's conceivable to me that as, if this was a, an independent artisan of some kind. That wanted to create a studio and have living space above. We certainly, under zoning, that certainly would be allowed. And so I don't. I think you're, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think your concern is that you don't want it to be rented. On a short-term basis or, or anytime basis, I guess, but I, I guess the question to ask is.
Yeah, if it was a permanent, if they were, they were going to put an artist's studio downstairs and have two apartments upstairs, that would be beautiful.
Is it possible that they're going to have a bedroom that the artists that are appearing at.
Yeah, because we already have that in La Conia.
Could, could stay overnight, not as a rental, but rather as part of their contractual agreement. And I, to me, those are two different things, but they may not be to you. So I, that's why I'm asking the question. Is it just short-term rentals and, and rentals?
Well, I, what I'm.
Or is it, is it no sleeping period? I think that, that those are two different.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty hard to, to, to enforce a no sleeping period, but I think you understand what I'm saying. Performing artists come to an area for short periods of time. Okay, and that's all fine and good. We have, you know. I just think that if they were going to convert this to some sort of a, say, or include some sort of a dormitory. Or something like that, that they either need to come back in front of us, or that it needs to be iterated in the plan.
Right, it has not been represented at that at this time.
And it hasn't been represented that that's what's going on, and I, and I don't, I mean, if that's what, if they want to come back and say, you know, we would like to put a couple of small bedrooms, bath and shower, and a little kitchenette up there. You know, for the benefit of some of the artists, because, you know, the hotels in that area are pretty pricey. That would be another topic for another day, but as this proposal is presented to us, and I want to clarify this. This is not, this is not anticipating any kind of a dormitory situation. This is.
No, but it doesn't alleviate the ability to put a shower and all that in place. Because. It appears to me that it's a place where they can not only do their practice downstairs or whatever it is they do. But they have a place to get ready, and usually getting ready means you're going to need a shower, you're going to need that, so. That kind of infrastructure in the place would probably already be there. I'm only assuming. That, that that was a, I mean, you, you part of it.
You could have a full bathroom and not be a living space, I mean.
Oh, I understand all of that, but it, it's, it's the dormitory component.
Yep.
That, that I question.
But we already, we already allow this. Because of the, um, uh, narrowness situation, they have a house over here in La Conia that they use.
That's a different component, because that was a, well, no, but that's a short-term rental. We gave them, yeah, it is. We gave them a short-term rental permit.
This here, and hard to make an assumption here.
It is.
This artist area, this studio area, certainly. People are coming in to perform.
Right.
At the Opera House. Need a spot, meet and greet downstairs, and I really. Don't see a problem if they were to offer a spot for the artist to be.
I mean, if you looked at it, no, that's, that's correct, and if you looked at it, you take some of the. Higher-up people in the chain of life, you know, their office has a shower, bathroom suite inside their office. I mean, so it's not uncommon for, of a thing for that to happen. I mean, for even for this, I mean.
I, right, I, and. But to your point. You wouldn't want to see it just be a short-term rental. I see it as a benefit that they offer to the artist. To be able to have a spot to come in.
Yes.
And shake your shoes off for a moment instead of walking around on the street.
Yes. Because even, I think Meadowbrook has a house where, on, on their property, that the actual, the entertaining people go to this house. It has a pool and everything, and that's where they do their thing, and then they go to do the show. But we all understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's, it's the dormitory component that, and I don't know if our ordinances differentiate from that. Am I making any sense to anyone?
I can speak to that if that would be helpful.
Sure.
It's up to you, Mr. Cherry.
So when we completed the application, what you're talking about wasn't contemplated. The plans don't involve a shower. So I haven't had an opportunity to consult with my client to address those concerns. But what it, what I would request that the board not do is create a precedent where if somebody's asking for a variance for something unrelated to short-term rentals. It attach a restriction just as a workaround to potential short-term rental legislation. I think if they wanted to use it as a short-term rental, they'd have to apply for.
I think to under our ordinances, you're right.
Right, so I think, you know, I haven't really had an opportunity to address those concerns, and I'd be happy to, but it seems like it's something that's not necessary, that would be dealt with down the line if they did want to convert it to that type of use.
Oh, but I, I think where I was going with this, and I was taking it a little further, is to contemplate a dormitory situation involves different life safety codes.
What do you keep saying dormitory? I don't.
Well, I, I'm just saying, you know, sometimes, you know, you could have three or four beds where, you know, performers, you know, could sleep.
That's why I'm asking, that was why I was asking, the question I was asking. If, when we get the building permit, there is going to be a sleeping area.
Right.
Then yes, there, there are a number of considerations as part of the building permit process that we would have to do. And that would include sprinklers, et cetera. But my, my question really is. Again, if. If this was going to be an artist's studio, it was not attached to the Opera House. As an example. And someone wanted to put a dance studio or whatever on the first floor, or sculpturing, or whatever they're going to do on the first floor. And they wanted to live on the second floor, that would be allowed under our zoning.
It would, and live is the operative word.
Right, right, so, and, and at, certainly at this moment in time. Short-term rental would not be allowed on that property anyway, unless they got a variance, because they don't qualify for any of the. Of the carve-out exceptions. They haven't been doing it for five years.
Right.
It's not seasonal, it's not whatever, okay?
And the owner would have to live there.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's.
That's one of the special carve-outs right now. What, we don't know what the legislature is going to do, but I'm saying at the moment. At the moment, that takes.
They don't even know.
They, yeah, they do.
Yeah.
They know exactly what they want to do.
I mean, in my mind, the fact that someone may be sleeping in there occasionally. As one of the artists is, is one thing that's different than. Short-term rental or.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Or even someone there on a long-term basis, a staff member or whatever, that's, that's, those are, in my mind, that's a different thing. And I, that's why I wanted that clarification, because when we get to the building permit, I want to know what.
What's going on?
You know, what, what, what the restrictions are or what the conditions.
But if, even if they were to go down that road in the future with the building permit and everything, then it is allowed use under our ordinance. Is what I'm hearing you say.
Or some type of accessory use, sleeping for the, the kind of use that they're doing, yes. That would be allowed. And currently, short-term rental would not be allowed, and I don't see that there's a way that they would qualify for any of the carve-outs in our ordinance. Unless they actually got a variance, in which case they got to come back to you and talk to you.
All right, then, then, you know, that's, that's, I just wanted to clarify a few things about how the property was going to be used and whether our ordinance is consistent with the use.
Yep. Okay. So we've had a great deal of discussion. And.
We should go first, parking or the special exception?
Numbered.
I would do the variance first. We should do the variance first.
Being as it's numbered that way anyways.
Like to entertain a motion on the variance?
Uh, make a motion to. Accept the variance. On fifty-nine Clinton Street, application number two zero two-two dash zero one-one. This is a variance from Article forty-eight E. And it's to permit parking within the setback area in a residential district. Granting the property would not, the variance not be contrary to the public interest, because the parking area will be screened with fencing and landscaping. And I think that addresses both sides. Adjacent areas on abutting parcels are currently being used for parking. Fencing will be utilized to provide, the spirit of ordinance would be observed, because fencing will be utilized to provide a visual barrier. Parking demand in the winter is reduced, and snow storage can be accommodated within the proposed parking area. Granting the variance would do substantial, substantial justice, because there is a general lack of parking in the vicinity. Additional parking would provide some relief in the existing parking shortage in the neighborhood. Though I don't imagine that other people would be parking in here. I think it would be dedicated to the project itself. Variance granted, the values of surrounding properties do not be diminished. Project includes high-quality materials, professional landscaping. Although the area is a residential zone, the surrounding area includes a mix of uses. Parking area is consistent with the parking areas provided on adjacent lots for multifamily residential uses. No fair and substantial relationship exists between. The general purpose, public purposes of the ordinance provision, specific application of that provision to the property, because the parking area will be adequately screened. And is similar in nature to parking areas and adjacent parcels in the area. Once again, it's reasonable, because there's a parking shortage. But once again, this is, I'm not imagining this being utilized by the neighborhood. I'm seeing this as being used by the, uh. Project itself. Lock configuration results, the. Yeah. And so the criteria. Unnecessary hardship, what is it giving me? Lock configuration results and narrow access from the streets, such as configuration of parking and driveway access. For the proposed project is limited if the setback areas are maintained.
Okay, we have motion?
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion of the motion?
Just one question on, on that. Did you want to cap the number of parking spaces, or do we not have enough information to do that yet?
I can't see more than nine.
I ca- okay, well, that was, that was why I brought it up.
So if that's the number, nine is the number.
I think whatever planning figures out would be the best highest use would probably be adequate. What do y'all think?
I concur.
Okay, so we, any other discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael, are you voting or?
No, you are.
No, you are.
I came too late.
And those against, one against. All right, motion passes? All right. Next one is the special exception. Looking for a motion for the special exception?
Motion to accept the special exception for fifty-nine Clinton Street, application number two zero two-two dash zero zero one-two. They're looking for a special exception. For an artist's studio. From Article two thirty-five, attachment two. And this is listed as a permitted use by special exception. So the use is specifically authorized in this chapter, use as an artist's studio is specifically authorized under the table of permitted uses for the residential general zoning district. It will not. Create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The proposed use is not expected to create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Property will allow artists performing at the Lakeport Opera House, a place to wait before or after their performance. Property is within walking distance to the Lakeport Opera House, within well-marked pedestrians crossings and sidewalks. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets. The proposed use will not overload any public water drain or sewage system or any other municipal system, nor is there any change that would increase stormwater runoff. The requested use will not create excessive demand from all municipal police, fire protection schools, or solid waste disposal services. The requested use will have little to no effect on the demand for municipal police, fire protection schools, or solid waste disposal. Any special provisions for the use as set forth in this chapter are fulfilled, and it says none, where we, we don't have any special provisions. The requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, nor be detrimental for use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The requested use will not create hazards to health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The adjacent neighborhood has a variety of mixed uses, for example, restaurant, entertainment venue, church, park. The use therefore is not out of character for the neighborhood. And the proposed location is appropriate for the requested use. The location is appropriate for the requested use, as it lies adjacent to the Lakeport Opera House. The property is a short distance from the Lakeport Opera House, and the use of the property as an artist's studio is a natural extension of the Opera House. And will complement the neighborhood. The requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the master plan. The requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter. Being as the surrounding neighborhood contains a variety of mixed uses.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We got a second. Any discussion? Any conditions need to be put forth? No discussion? All those in favor of the special exception?
Aye.
Passes five-zero. All right. Other business, we had a. I guess let's move to the next meeting, to say it just quickly.
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved to the next meeting.
Right now.
Right.
The, uh.
Attorney?
Yeah, the butters appeal thing.
Yeah, okay.
Has been moved to the next meeting.
To April, your favorite month this year.
Any other business before the board tonight?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
If the board doesn't mind, I just want to let you all know that tonight is my last meeting with you all.
Oh, hi.
April first is my last day here with the City of Laconia, I am taking a position with another municipality.
Well, good luck to you.
Well, we're going to miss you.
It's been a pleasure.
What is she doing?
Good luck.
Short and sweet.
Well...
Well, you will be missed by me.
All right, anything else before the board?
Who's going to help me with my building permit?
Yes, yes, till next month, there's been a...
Six o'clock again?
Apparently a...
We don't know, we're going to have enlightenment as the meeting becomes closer.
Okay.
We will be enlightened.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, aye, good night.
I just wanted to see a number on the parking, that's all.
Should be.
Yes. Why didn't I mean?
That was going to pass.